For your grace, welcome to this first school board meeting of the academic 2022, 2023, 2023 school year and the first of August. Thank you all for joining us. We have been called to order. We officially have a quorum. I believe I saw Mrs. Cheryl Mays with Congressman Cooper's office, former school board chair and school board member-elect. Would you please join us at the podium for the pledge? Would everyone else please stand for the pledge?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America. For which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all. Thanks for that shout out, Chair Bugs.
Thank you, Mrs. Mays. All right, I would like to see a motion to accept or amend the agenda as listed.
The agenda is presented.
Do we have a second?
Second.
All right, all in favor, please raise your hand. It has been unanimously accepted. We will begin our evening then with awards and recognitions. It seems like we have quite a few. Dr. Battle?
Yes, we do have a couple today, this evening. Again, good evening, Chair Bugs and board members, everyone who's with us. Tonight, I'm excited to honor two members of Team MMPS who won national awards this summer for their great work supporting and lifting up our students. First up is Dr. Brenda Diaz, executive principal of Nashville Big Picture High School, who was named the 2022 Ted Sizer School Leader of the Year from among the 81 principals who lead big picture learning schools across the United States. Let's give her a round of applause as she comes up to the podium. All right, Principal Diaz, stay up here at the podium. So this award is named after Ted Sizer, an educator who once said, "I cannot teach a child I do not know." Those words fit right in with our district-wide mission of making every MMPS student known, a mission that Dr. Diaz and her team embrace fully. Dr. Diaz always signs off on her emails with the phrase, "Leading with love and courage," and she does just that daily. Under her leadership, Nashville Big Picture School works every day to build and sustain a culture of kindness that supports students in pursuing their dreams with a curriculum that is geared toward each student's unique interests, their backgrounds, and their learning style. As Dr. Diaz puts it, "I believe our goal as educators is to never forget to focus on the individual strengths and gifts of all students while we work to meet their very needs, one student at a time. I'm a radical leader because I unapologetically love children." Dr. Diaz, we're thrilled to know that Big Picture Learning also sees what we've all been fortunate to see on a regular basis since you joined MMPS in 2017. Thank you for everything you do every day for your students and your staff, and congratulations on this great honor. And if you don't mind, we'd like for you to please come up and take a picture. Congratulations. who won the NCCEP Gear Up Professional of the Year Award from the National Council for Community and Educational Partnerships. April, why don't you come on up? Come on up, let's give her a round of applause. Don't mind, I'd like to speak a little greatness about you while you're up front. So for those of you who don't know, Gear Up stands for gaining early awareness and readiness for undergraduate programs, a federally funded initiative that works to increase the number of low-income students who are prepared to go to college and to succeed when they get there. Ms. Gung is an ideal leader and supporter of students in this space. She was a first-generation high school graduate and college graduate herself and is a former high school counselor. She not only understands her students, but also has a passion for helping them get to where they want to go. As Ms. Gung says, whether it be a four-year or two-year college, trade school, apprenticeship, military, or straight-to-work with an industry certification already in hand, I love walking alongside Maplewood High School students in their journey towards envisioning and achieving life success. Thanks to the Gear Up Nashville and Maplewood High School students and staff who support me and thinking big about this work. Ms. Gung, you make us proud with the way you pour yourself into your students and their drive to achieve their dreams. Congratulations on this great award, and if you would, also grace us up at the front to take a quick photo to continue to celebrate you. Congratulations.
Is it now, or is it with the name? You come up here too. Well, I'll do it. Battle, and congratulations to those staff members. We know you're having a great impact on our students. We appreciate what you do. But now we will move on to our director's report. After the first two days of school, well, two half-days for pre-K and kindergarten, we're excited to hear about what you have to say, Dr. Battle.
All right, thank you so much again, Madam Chair. All right, thank you again to this board for your vision, for your support. As we kicked off another great school year, most importantly, thank you to all of our teachers, our staff, students, and families who decided to make and call MMPS your home for the 22 and 22, 23 school year. Last year, you all dug in and helped to dig us out of the effects of the pandemic, and I'm excited to build upon the strong foundation that was laid last year in terms of academic growth and progress. I'm also excited about the many new programs and initiatives that were developed and implemented, particularly related to the social-emotional learning needs of our students. We are now home, not only are we a one-to-one district, technology-wise, we are now home to advocacy centers in all of our elementary schools and restorative practice assistance and peace centers in all of our secondary schools. Right, I know we've got some partners here who've been on this journey with us, so we're excited about that implementation. So welcome to the 2022, 23 school year. Before I get into our back-to-school updates, I wanted to first kick us off with a video to show the excitement of getting ready for the first day back to school, which was yesterday Monday. Welcome back! Welcome back! Welcome back, y'all! Welcome to the 2022, 23 school year. And it is going to be a great year. It is going to be a great year. All right, a round of applause for everyone. All right, so I had the distinct, let me go back. I had the distinct pleasure of kicking off the start of the school year visiting several of our schools this week. They are filled with dynamic teams who are eager to ensure every MMPS student is known. So a quick shout-out, I want to give a thank you to East High School, East Middle School, Head Middle Magnet, Haynes Middle School for demonstrating strong learning communities kicking off on day one. I also had the pleasure of walking the halls at Robert Churchill Elementary to support their new principal, Kenneth Bonner, who has introduced a new health system at the school named after some of the fine colleges and universities in Nashville. It's a pretty cool health system that you should check out. Yesterday, Churchill students were greeted by Fisk University students, doctors from Vanderbilt University, students from Bell Mudge, MMPD, Support Hub leaders, and many others. It was an inspiring visit to all of the schools that I just shared, and I'm excited to watch our students thrive throughout the school year. Now, I am also pleased and excited to be a parent here in Metro Nashville Public Schools. After a lifetime as a student and staff member, my son is now attending pre-K and is off to a great start with excellent leadership, principals, teachers, and support staff, y'all, he is ready to go. So thank you all for all of your support as we kicked off this year, and I know he will have a fantastic foundational year in pre-K. Let's see, I might need some help here, Vance, in my slide. Thank you. So we still aren't in our ideal space for staff because, like other districts and industries, there's a labor shortage and competition for staff to fill vacancies across the board. As of yesterday, actually, we had about, at the end of day, we had about 135 vacancies. This number has actually decreased throughout the day for full-time certificated vacancies. So we're somewhere closer to around 100 at the end of today, which represents roughly about 2% or less of our staff, our total number of certificated teachers. So we'll continue to push forward in that area, ensuring that all of our students have high-quality staff. With regard to our bus drivers, we're proud that we have retained largely the same number of drivers this last school year, but we have more drivers who have expressed interest in coming back to MMPS, who have previously left due to pay, along with more applicants. We have an additional four trainees who started on Monday and 10 more in process through interviews or background checks. So that is exciting news, that we're starting to build that pool and being able to fill the number of vacancies we've had in our transportation department for many, many years, and we're so thankful to all of our support employees, including our drivers who safely transport our students to and from school daily. We've been fortunate to be able to market our district above others by having the best-paid teachers in the state, a new starting wage for bus drivers that is aligned to WIGO, as well as an $18 an hour minimum wage for support staff and paid family leave for all of our employees. In terms of steps we're taking to fill vacancies, we have strong partnerships with area universities to identify and recruit potential teachers. We have our Grow Your Own program, which provides support staff opportunities to earn a teaching certificate, which we have, we have a number of our Grow Your Own employees joining our certificated staff this year. There are options available to hire permitted but not certificated teachers. We are working with retired teachers associations to recruit retirees based on new state laws that grant greater flexibility to those staff, in addition to previously existing 120-day positions for those who don't want to commit to full-time teaching throughout the year but provide needed support, particularly when there are vacancies at the start of the year or when vacancies occur due to FMLA or other reasons. In addition to using general assistants, or what we call sometimes permanent substitutes, our regular substitute teachers to fill vacancies, principals may adjust their master schedules to balance their class sizes as long as they fall within state requirements for average and maximum class sizes, as well as assigning administrators to support classes when necessary. So again, we are all hands on deck. We're asking all of our certificated staff to make sure that our students have that quality leader and teacher in front of them on a daily basis, so we will continue to adjust to meet the needs of our students as well as continuing to recruit new employees, new staff members to Team MMPS. Our enrollment centers have also been extremely busy processing new applications and transfers for students over the last two weeks, with nearly 9,000 families assisted, about 3,100 K-12 enrollments and transfers processed, and 207 new pre-K students added. In the first few weeks, there are a lot of changes in enrollment numbers as students are added or withdrawn, but we'll look towards our 40-day count to see where we truly are for this school year and how that might affect state funding or school-based allocation. So we'll continue to keep you updated with those numbers. We've also seen a steady increase of English learners over the last school year, when we started with about 16,150 and ended the year last year with nearly 17,500 English-language learner students. Now, we're starting off the year with 18,400 EL students, or 22% of our district, so we're proud of the diversity of our students and to support them daily. Our EL office has been working with the Matthew Walker Health Clinic to get these students' vaccines and physicals, and we launched a new 24/7 translation support service for live, on-demand interpretation to help our schools keep up with the demand and to stay connected with families. We've been extremely busy over the summer kicking off for this upcoming school year. This summer, we have provided a lot of paid professional learning opportunities for our certificated and our support staff so that they can be ready and prepared for the new school year, and that is consistently the feedback that I've received, is just the high level of preparation for our team as we kicked off on yesterday. On Thursday of last week, we had a district-wide in-service with thousands of teachers and support staff going to attend trainings aligned to their area of expertise. We also instituted diversity, equity, and inclusion training for all staff to help align with our core tenet of identifying and eliminating inequities in our district, as well as SEL, or social-emotional learning, training, and literacy professional development, along with many optional courses for teachers and staff to participate in. Let's also not forget, we kicked off our year with a great Together for Teachers event hosted by Pencil and other great partners at First Horizon Park with lots of giveaways and food and music and games and just lots of fun. So thanks again to our friends at Pencil and our other sponsors for hosting our third annual now Together for Teachers event. I also had the pleasure of kicking off our district-wide in-service with our transportation team, our paraprofessionals, our low-incidence teachers and therapists at McGavick and Hillwood High Schools, and had the pleasure of welcoming all of our new teachers and their new teacher orientation at Stratford High School. I will tell you all, the energy, the excitement was contagious, and I was truly inspired by all these valued leaders and all the great work ahead. Now, Family Information Center has been busy and hard at work as well. They start off the school year, families start off the school year with lots of questions, and we want to make sure that we're meeting the needs of our parents and our families. And our Family Information Center, again, has been hard at work fielding those calls and visits to provide them with the information they need for their students to be successful in the upcoming school year, while also connecting them with the people and resources to tackle any issues they might be experiencing that will prevent that great start. So more than 7,500 people or families have been serviced by the FIC in just the last couple of weeks, and so we are so proud that we've been able to meet that demand, more so better this year than in years past, and we will continue to expand, align our resources, and coordinate to be that first point of contact to support our families for the kickoff of the year. Now, another exciting update, so last year, our schools won three state championships. We had 15 individual and seven relay track and field state championships and a wrestling individual state championship. We had two MMPS student athletes who won Mr. Football and Mr. Basketball as the best players in the state. So more importantly, 75 of our MMPS high school teams earned T double-S double-A academic achievement awards for their grade point averages. As the fall sports season begins for cross-country, football, girls soccer, and volleyball, we're aiming even higher this year in our athletic and academic success. The football jamboree kicks things off for football Thursday evening this week, y'all, and all fall sports will be in action next week. This year, we're excited because we're expanding opportunities for our students with the addition of cross-country and soccer, guess where, in elementary schools and cross-country in our middle schools. How about that? Sports clubs for our youngest learners in elementary, our third and fourth graders, and expanding at the middle school level. So in conjunction with the Special Olympics, we're also increasing our high school unified track and field teams across the school district with the help of the Tennessee Titans, who are adding girls flag football in the spring. And one last addition, yeah, it's all worth celebrating. Our MMPS middle schools have joined the Tennessee Middle School Athletic Association and will not only have the opportunity to compete at the district level, but also at the state level. So it is going to be a great year for athletics and MMPS. Last week, I had the pleasure of joining Chief Drake, Chief John Drake, for an announcement relating to the safety and security of our students here in MMPS, particularly in light of the shooting in Uvalde. So starting this past Monday, yesterday, active-duty MMPS officers volunteered to visit campuses on an overtime basis to provide a visible layer of protection for our elementary students in the morning, along with check-ins by MMPD throughout the school day. The School Resource Officer Program, like the police department generally, is understaffed, and they are working on a national recruitment strategy to get more officers here in Nashville. Meanwhile, they have a plan to ensure officers are stationed at our high schools and that each middle school has daily coverage in the form of an SRO that will rotate throughout a sector and provide a touch point for principals who need assistance. We've continued to iron out the details on the school ambassador program that would utilize retired police officers who will be unarmed but use their experience and training, and unarmed, and I should say, un-uniformed, not uniformed as well, along with training provided by MMPS on how to support students with different needs and address implicit bias. We are still working to identify the source of funding that will be used in the mechanism for employment, but Chief Drake has already been reaching out to those retired officers to identify candidates and to recruit them back into service in their community. Long-term, we will also be looking to expand our campus support staff positions that are currently in place at the middle and high school levels to also serve in elementary schools, providing the extra layer of protection through the adherence to safety protocols and procedures, pressure testing, and providing support to staff in need of assistance. In terms of the physical infrastructure of our schools, we are continuing to leverage the $4 million that was allocated by the city to MMPS for one-time expenditures, the bulk of which will come in the form of completing the long-term vestibule project throughout the district. We're down to 12 schools that are in some phase of design or construction and look to have that completed by the end of this year. We're also, meaning December, we're also upgrading security cameras, lighting, fencing, and making other security improvements where necessary, and continuing to look at other ways we can provide security, such as new technology that can be added to our existing security camera system to detect weapons and identify threats. Finally, no investments will take the place of vigilance and practice by our school-based staff, who must respond first to any threats before police arrive. This means stopping threats from happening by keeping doors locked at all times and strictly adhering to visitor policies, along with regular drills and training so that all staff and students will be on the same page in case a real threat does occur. So that work will continue. We will continue to review and make adjustments as needed, but we are not only doubling down on our safety and security measures with our staff, we're asking our students, we're asking our parents, we're asking our visitors to help us really comply and adhere to those safety measures we have in place to keep everyone safe. All right, no-cost meals. So over the summer, we received approval to leverage our ESAR funding to continue offering no-cost meals to all of our students. We had previously done so using federal USDA waivers that expired, which moved us back into the previous system of CEP schools that are free and non-CEP schools that require your free and reduced-price lunch forms. So we are asking families to still fill out the forms that will help us as we're collecting our data and information as we move forward, but for the next two school years, Metro Nashville Public Schools will offer no-cost meals to all students for breakfast and for Thank you. And finally, I just want to provide a brief overview of our COVID-19 protocols. I'll say right at the top of this, most of them are the same as the way we ended the school year last year, in that masks are encouraged but not required, and we have provided schools with resources to support them with that option. A couple changes include that we will no longer be doing school-wide notifications of positive cases, but where the classroom exposure notifications. Also, students who have to isolate will no longer be allowed to participate in remote learning to count towards attendance because the state rules that allowed that in the previous year were only for the 21, 22 school year, and that has now expired. So students will need to take an excused absence if they isolate because of COVID-19, and we're asking families, we're asking guardians to work closely with their schools because it is our number-one priority to support our students, both in their health but for their learning academically, and we want to do everything we can to make sure there's no interruption in their access to their courses. So please work closely with your school teams, reach out to your teachers, your counselors as needed, and your principals to assist you throughout their process, and we will continue to advocate for the things that are necessary to keep our students safe and to have as many limited distractions to their learning progress. We also have our thermal cameras that remain available for schools to use, and our COVID-19 leave policy remains in effect through Labor Day weekend for our staff, at which point that policy will expire, but we will continue that from now until Labor Day as we phase into the school year. Now, COVID has become a part of our daily lives in this country and in the school setting. Vaccines and treatments have helped to lessen the impact of the virus, but it does not appear to be going away and will remain with us. It is a new normal that we have to remain vigilant and aware, protecting ourselves and others when possible, but moving forward with our lives and the whole work of teaching and learning. And so, again, I think it's a huge celebration that we've kicked off this school year with all of our students learning in person, all of our staff members in person, and just continuing to stay focused on keeping our students at the core of everything that we do. And the last thing I'll share, Madam Chair and Board, is that we are back in school in MMPS, so we, welcome to the 2022, 23 school year, and it is going to be a great year. Let's do this, y'all.
Thank you for those updates, Dr. Battle. Do we have any statements or questions, Mrs. Tyler?
Hi, yeah, I have a couple of questions. I'm going to start at the back and work my way backwards. So if we're looking at our COVID policy updates, so I noticed that for students who have gotten a positive COVID test, they're allowed to have three excused days with two extra days that could be excused at the discretion of the principal. The CDC recommends that somebody who tests positive for COVID isolate for five days. So I'm just wondering why we didn't just go ahead and say, for five consecutive days after you test positive, you'll be given an excused absence?
I'm going to look at Dr. Springer. I believe our policy is five excused days.
Okay, that's not what's come out to everybody.
That was, that was an error in the communication. We're updating all the website and stuff with that. Sorry about that.
No, that's good to know. That's why I was asking.
It is five excuse, up to five excuse absences.
Wonderful, thank you. I'm glad you cleared that up. And then, going back to our safety and security, so I've been hearing from a lot of my constituents who are really concerned about having police officers, even if they are unarmed and not in their uniform, they're really concerned about having police officers in elementary schools specifically. So I guess one of my questions is, what does this say? So I guess one of my questions is, what does this safety ambassador program do for our elementary schools that we think would actually keep them safer than increasing patrols outside to make sure that people in the neighborhood understand that there is a police presence there, that they know that there's, you know, quick reaction time because there's going to be somebody in the vicinity of every elementary school? I have no problem with increasing police presence outside of our schools because the idea was not, with Uvalde especially, the idea was that the threat is coming from outside. And so if the threat's coming from outside, why are we putting somebody inside? I would think that the ability to stop somebody, we would want that to happen before they got inside. So we would want to have, you know, the police officers who are patrolling, like you've already said. To me, that's a really great way to up the security, to make sure that that's visible, they know the neighborhood, they get to know the people and the routine, so they can see when something's off. But having somebody inside the school has just brought up a lot of concern because there's a lot of studies out there that show that when you have police officers in school, there are disproportionate negative effects for students of color and also for students who receive exceptional education services. So, I mean, we've talked about this a little bit already, and I know you addressed some of that, but I guess in the end, my big question is, how is having these people inside the schools as opposed to just increasing the outside presence a better way to deal with it?
So I think there might be some confusion in the question. So first off, this is a two-pronged approach, both protecting against external threats, but also internal threats. And let's be real, when we were looking at the data, the chances of something happening inside the school building is at a greater risk than the external threats that we've been seeing. While they are critical and we have to protect against them, we must do both. So in our two-pronged approach with our external security in partnership with MNPD, again, grateful to MNPD and Chief Drake for their continued partnership, we are talking about armed and uniformed police officers who will be patrolling, who will also be checking in with principals to see if there's any concerns in the staff that they need to address. So that is one level to this approach. The second approach is to also strengthen our internal safety measures as well. So while we have to guard against things like the unfortunate mass shootings that we've seen, we also need to protect against other incidents that happen within the school building when someone is inside the building as well. And so when we're talking about those school ambassador officers, think in terms of our campus support staff that we already have, these would not be current MNPD officers. We're talking about retired officers, we're talking about civilians, we're talking about individuals that we will train like we already do in collaboration with MNPD so that they can be equipped with radios and the proper training and supporting our young people. We are, and I am well-aware of the studies, which is why we've guarded against armed and uniformed officers inside of our elementary schools. But it is my belief and the belief of my team and the belief in our partnership with Chief Drake that if we take on a dual approach with having those trained officers, armed officers outside the building to protect against external threats, and also supports inside that building to pressure test, to make sure our safety measures are in place, helping us review and update our plans, flagging us when we need additional training around things, that only strengthens our ability to keep our students and our staff safe. So again, I want to reiterate, those safety ambassadors inside of schools are not MNPD officers, they are not in our current plan, plan to be uniformed or armed, but working closely to build positive lasting relationships with our students and pressure testing our safety measures on a daily basis so that we know where we need to plug in and where we need to make adjustments. It is a part of our school visit protocols, we're testing out those safety measures, but it is critically important to have someone on the ground daily doing that as well. So that's what that two-pronged approach is and why we've taken the approach around the school ambassador program and our internal supports and the partnership with MNPD for our external partnership.
Okay, so will the safety ambassadors be employed by MNPS or MNPD?
We're actually still working through those specific details. The good news is that MNPS is currently home to campus support individuals, leaders within our building, so we have a strong foundation and start with regards to that job description, training, and supervision. Chief Drake has already sent out a request to his retired officers and others he knows who might be interested to help us build a pool, but we're in the process as we're looking to secure funding and determining if they would be MNPS employees or employed under MNPD. I want to be clear that our SRO program actually falls under MNPD, and so we're just looking to make sure we have consistency, to make sure we have alignment around MNPS's expectations, around how our adults interact with our students, and the needs around safety in all of our school buildings.
When we spoke, you had told me that these safety ambassadors will not be used for discipline inside the elementary schools. How can we ensure that that remains the case in every, like, what are we putting into place to ensure that?
That's our expectation. We have a student-parent handbook that has very explicit procedures that our schools follow. Again, our campus supervisor, our safety ambassador program is not new to Metro National Public Schools. They have not been a part of the discipline response, and we will continue their practice as we move forward. So ensuring that, I think we can look back to our history and our practice around our expectations around those layers of support, keeping in mind, we have campus support in our school buildings, we also have our school district-level, school security who responds to needs as needed, our partnership with our SRO program, now our expansion around the patrolling for those external threats. So we have multiple layers, and again, our history has been that our campus support individuals, along with those safety ambassadors, would comply with those expectations as we move forward. We're also planning for training, ongoing training between MNPS and MNPD to make sure we're meeting our expectations.
Yes, I will say, while I'm still not a fan of officers inside our elementary schools, I do take a little bit of heart that they are not to be used for discipline, that they will not be armed, they will not be uniformed, and that they will also go through our trainings as well, and that it will be a consistent, ongoing trainings to make sure that they are receiving the same kind of implicit bias, and how do we work with kids who are neurodivergent, how do we work with kids who have exceptional abilities? I think that's extremely important and something that needs to be ongoing.
And I think we have over 100 campus support individuals in our schools right now, close to 100 campus support. So again, those leaders are not new to MNPS. We are well-versed in their role and their responsibility, as well as training them for those positions.
Okay, and right now, we've had, I know I've seen outside of several of the schools in my district, a much stronger police presence on these first days, and I know several of my schools have appreciated the reminding everybody to follow the school zone speed limit. I think that's really important, and so they're very much appreciated for that. And I think the question is, are they going to, are they expected to stay outside to kind of continue to do that, or are they going to be coming into the schools? Because I think part of the question was, these are uniformed armed officers, and so what's...
Yeah, you know, I'll say this, I've been out in schools, multiple schools over the last few days. I have thoroughly enjoyed meeting and just being able to introduce myself to our SR, MNPD officers who are doing their patrolling. They are there for the good of our learning communities. I've just been so just excited and impressed by their level of service and wanting to do what's best. And so what we've been communicating with MNPD as we're kicking things off with this extra layer of support, that we'll stay in communication as we see needs, believe you me, they will be happy to plug in wherever they can, so we will continue to leverage them in that way and make adjustments as we move forward. Again, this is new. We started a pilot of this at the end of last school year and through promising scholars, which promising scholars didn't happen in all of our schools, but we will continue to make those adjustments, and right now, they are assisting with that work as well, and we'll continue to make adjustments.
It'd be great in some of our schools if they could be used as crossing guards as well. I know that they've lost some positions. If they're going to be there anyway, man, we'd love that help with not only the traffic, but also just making sure our families and students are safe. Okay, I feel like I'm taking a lot of time. Moving backwards a little bit more, looking at our professional development, I just want to applaud the increase in the hours of SEL and DEI. I think it's really important that we continue to do that, and so I want to thank you for that. And then I just want to also ask about, do we happen to know how many hours teachers got to work in their classrooms and plan during the last week? Because you just broke it down into hours, so I was just...
Yeah, many of what you see here, most of this happened prior to the in-service week with our staff. So, oh gosh, our teachers came back on Tuesday, they were in their buildings on Tuesday and Wednesday for in-service and planning time. Thursday was the in-service professional development day, and Friday was a full day, if I'm not mistaken, of planning for our teachers. And so we've worked closely with our partners at MNEA and others, taking feedback as we built the calendar over the years to make sure we're being responsive to those needs. But what you see represented here, for the most part, all happened before our kickoff of in-service.
Okay, thank you. I'll yield the floor.
Apologies, Mrs. Masters.
Thank you. So, understanding that we're not sure who these security ambassadors are going to be employed by yet, who is responsible for their training?
Again, we are taking a dual approach with our training. It will be a collaboration between MNPS and MNPD. When we kicked off our training this summer, again, I'm so thankful to both teams, school security, Ed Young, his team, Maura Sullivan, our chief of operations, and Chief Drake and his team at MNPD, we kicked off this co-collaboration to reset us for this year, this summer. We trained our administrators on our security plans and got everyone up to speed. It was beautiful, right? It was a combination of our MNPS leaders leaning in, as well as MNPD adding the extra layer of support. Our teams meet constantly, sharing information and updates and opportunities for professional learning, and so we plan to move forward with a cross-collaborative professional development, planning, and implementation.
Thank you for that. So, and there's a possibility that you could be hired for that position and not necessarily be a retired police officer?
Absolutely, absolutely. We are, so MNPD, because of the pool they have and their retired police officers, we definitely want to leverage that, but we'll also continue to recruit and train campus support individuals. So it will be a combination, more than likely. I do not anticipate that every position will be a retired police officer, but we are planning to train these individuals in the work of MNPS and building those relationships, and again, pressure testing our safety and security measures. So we will continue to expand the campus support role.
And then to the SROs that are in middle schools and high schools, am I correct in assuming they also receive training beyond just being police officers? There's also some concentrated training in integrating into a school?
Absolutely correct. And again, that's why I keep underscoring that we are taking the learnings and the successes we've had through this partnership over the many years as we're looking to expand. So when we're talking about the types of individuals, when we're talking about professional development, when we're talking about when we come to the table to discuss any adjustments we need to make, we're taking those lessons learned and those successes into this expansion for our SROs and our safety ambassadors.
And then what level of information do students receive about just sort of understanding that presence in their schools?
So we're asking our schools to get students up to speed, remind them, if you go into summer schools, you see reminders about what shouldn't happen when you approach a door, things of the nature, talking to our students. We're asking our parents, talk to your students as well. We're asking for parents' patience as they check in, particularly through our Raptor system, and are identified as they come in, but we're asking all of our schools to kind of plug in, take the time to address the safety needs with our students. Everyone plays a role, and that's what we're really pressing upon our students, that they play a role too, and there are simple things that they can do to help make our schools safe. And let me give one example. I was at one school this morning, and they even have student safety ambassadors, where they're training their students, and they're leading that and plugging in and supporting other students in learning the right way to stay safe at school.
I'd love if Chief Drake wanted to come and address the board at some future meeting just to sort of talk about his philosophies around this collaboration, so just putting that out there. What, I'm sorry, one more thing on that. Are students receiving sort of information and education about, you know, feelings of discomfort around that presence in the school? And, you know, are students made aware of the school-specific training that the officers receive and the intention of this presence in the schools?
Well, I think one example I will rely upon here, in our middle schools, part of our partnership with MNPD is that they're continuing their DARE program, where our SRO officers are having conversations with students, teaching them what to do, how to respond if they see something, you say something, you know, just substance abuse, just things that students, our students need to be aware of, which includes safety and security measures. So that is one specific space that we've already started to plug in with and have over many, many years. In our elementary space, that's still under development, if you will, because of this new expansion into our elementary schools, and it is those relationships and those conversations have long been happening at the high school, but we'll need to continue to double down on those conversations. I mean, it's a perfect time to do so. We've had some of these measures in place for years past, and you kind of just wonder, like, why? Well, we have enough reasons around why, okay? And so now, the conversations we're having, we're not in the space of frightening our students, but we want them to be aware, and we want them to know what proactive measures they play in keeping us all safe. And so unfortunately, we have too many examples around why these safety and security measures are needed, and we're trying to press upon everyone how they can play a role in keeping our school safe.
One more, I promise, that. With the staff COVID leave policy, thank you for all those clarifications around the security measures, and thank you for paying heed to safety and security, but also a welcoming and warm learning environment. Staff COVID leave, so given that transmission of COVID is at the high level in Davidson County, what sort of ideas around what metrics we would need to be seeing are we considering? At what point would we reinstate our staff COVID leave policy?
We will be doing what we've been doing over the last few years. We'll continue to monitor the metrics that are before us, and I think with anything regarding COVID, we will adjust as needed. It is critically important that, you know, and I always hesitate to say getting back to normal, because I'm not really interested in getting back to normal, I want to be better than normal as we're moving throughout this school year and forward. We will continue to adjust, and I think this board and this district has demonstrated our willingness and our prioritization around safety to make the adjustments as needed, at the same time, making sure that we have our in-person learning environment that we're pouring into our students, and that our students stay at the core of the work that we're doing. So I don't think that policy is any different from any other policy we have that we'll continue to monitor. We've talked about the new CDC metrics that we've been using, we will continue to review as we have been. So our Director of Health, in collaboration with our other chiefs, will continue to have that conversation and make adjustments as needed. This current policy phase-out gives us an opportunity to all get back in person, hopefully adjust to anything that we've experienced over the first few weeks in summer, so that we can set a strong foundation of success as we move forward. So that is our hope, that is our goal as we move forward. I'll also highlight that our student policy has changed as well, and so we do have to have some alignment with that. We're providing some resources to our schools to address the need when someone is out, but we've got to get back to beyond normal in operating our schools so that our students can show the state and the world again how strong they are academically, how talented they are in so many ways at the end of this school year and for schools to come. And we know that, you know, that's not the only measure, but we want to give our students the best shot at everything that's before them.
And then I just want to say thanks to the family info line and School Choice office. I mean, even if you don't like the answers you're getting always, the response is so fast. The handoff to someone who has the information if they don't know what you need, I've heard that from a lot of families. So I did, I just wanted to throw that out there. That's it, I'm finished.
Thank you. Mrs. Elrod, and then Mrs. Poopa-Walker.
Thank you. So we're hearing a lot about the job description as a campus support individual. Is a campus support individual the position that we have funded through our school-based budget in our middle schools and high schools that kind of already currently pressure-test security procedures and kind of that process? Is that what that position is?
Yes, that's correct.
What is the difference between a campus support individual and a safety ambassador?
They're very similar. They're very similar. The safety ambassador title was just in recognition of the partnership with MNPD and really elevating that role and expanding that role into our elementary schools. And so, we use them interchangeably, but that was just to signify the partnership with MNPD and their willingness to recruit and train from their end and for us to bring our campus support model into the fold and conversation as well for us to build from.
Okay. Because I know the campus support individual position was a fairly new, it was new to me as something that we provided across all schools in our school-based budget. And so, I know that it's something we already provided, of course, at those levels of schools. But the safety ambassadors are now going to be at our elementary schools. But all of them, as an umbrella, all still follow our restorative practices model?
That's correct. That's correct. And for clarification, we've, for years, had kind of a non-negotiable around campus support in our middle school and high schools. It's been optional for elementary. And now, we're just kind of moving to the non-negotiable space. We want to make sure we have that presence across all of our schools as we're moving forward.
And then, for our SROs, I know that we have one at all comprehensive high schools and that we are hiring for vacancies, or we're not, but MNPD is hiring for vacancies in our middle schools. When are they anticipating that those vacancies will be filled?
Well, if I had a crystal ball, I could probably answer that. So, for clarification, we have two SROs at all of our zone high schools. At our middle and specialty schools and our magnet schools, we have rotating SRO officers right now. We do have a couple of middle schools who have an assigned SRO, because our goal and Chief Drake's goal is to hire an SRO for every middle school. This is just our approach until those vacancies are filled. All I can say is, every industry's kind of feeling it. It might even be harder in his space than ours currently. But he has committed to continuing to recruit and to hire for those roles so that we do get to our ideal space. And so, that's what we've communicated to our schools. Right now, we're starting in this rotating base. Once they fill their vacancies, we'll begin to assign again the one per middle school as was originally intended.
And given those conversations, Chief Drake had said at the press conference that there were some upcoming academies and some larger number of graduates. Of course, my personal hope is that they're not new graduates that start to work inside of our school, because it's a more, I hate to say it's a more stressful environment, but it's has a lot of considerations that maybe are not as natural to some officers. So, my hope is that they are ideally not new graduates, but we would be so happy to have that coverage, of course.
Yeah, and I don't know all the requirements for their graduates, but I would not say that just coming through that means that they come with no experience. That might not be equal, and I'd be more agreeing with that. So, that's the first thing. I was going to mention something else, but I just wanted to make sure we highlighted that. Oh, Chief Drake has created a new kind of arm and division in his department that's focused specifically around schools and school safety. So, we're grateful for their prioritization. But we also know that he has a number of vacancies in other areas as well. So, it might not be an apples-to-apples move as they're bringing those, comparison when they're graduating those cohorts. But he is committed to us prioritization, moving with a sense of urgency to get us to our ideal space as soon as possible.
Yes, he definitely conveyed that. And police departments across the country, just like school systems across the country, are having a really difficult time recruiting and retaining their staff, as are we. So, I appreciate that. I guess on that note, in a transition, I saw on the vacancies, we said that's about 2% of our certificated staff that we have as a vacancy, is close to about 100 of them. What is our typical percentage of vacancies of certified staff?
Yeah. So, pre-pandemic, this is probably trending below where we were pre-pandemic. We have in years past been pretty significantly above, about 100 vacancies. Throughout the last couple of years, as we've been navigating the pandemic, we've kicked off around 80 to 100 vacancies. So, it's pretty much in line with where we've been the last few years, but exceeding where we were pre-pandemic.
I was going to say, I know that, I think it was last year, we had like the lowest ever. And so, I didn't want to compare it just to last year's numbers, but in a historical context. Okay. And then, I guess, within that, are there any trends that we're noticing within those vacancies? Are there certain grade levels, or subjects, or areas, or clusters, or anything like that, we're having a particular difficulty recruiting teachers?
Chief Spencer, I'll look at you for this as well, but it's what we've seen over the years, some of the hard-to-staff areas, EL, English Language Learner Teachers, Exceptional Education, the specialized maths, sciences. We're faring pretty well with regards to our career and technical education courses. So, those areas seem to be the hardest to fill at this point. If you saw a breakdown by tier, you would see that we have a higher number of elementary schools than we do in high schools. But that's also because we have tripled the amount of elementary schools than we do high schools. And so, we've been working towards moving from our ideal space to our reality of how many students arrive or in certain grades and classes. And we'll be working over the next few weeks to balance that out. So, we could see some adjustments based upon that and meeting the state law class requirements. But specifically, those few areas are the hardest to staff for us right now.
And then, speaking of hard-to-staff places, I'm really encouraged by the amount of recruitment that we've had within our buses and transportation team. I think I heard you say that we have two people that are doing, or four trainees, and then we have 10 more in process. How long are our staff trainees before they start to become, have their own routes to kind of fill some of those vacancies? As I know, we've had some schools recently have to combine routes and that kind of stuff.
Yeah, fortunately, we have some experts in this area. I'd like to invite our Chief of Operations, Mara Sullivan, to the podium to respond specifically to that question. And anybody else she might want to tee up?
Dr. Battle, I'm going to invite Ken Stark, our Executive Officer of Operations here, so that I don't say the wrong number of weeks of training. But it is several weeks. Ken?
Good evening. The typical process is it takes a couple, we give them a couple of weeks to pass the written part of the test. We help them study, do that kind of thing. Then, they go on to range, on the road, driving, and the practice piece. And that generally is about a four to six-week process if they come to us brand-new. In this latest pool, we do have a couple that are coming to us with experience, which is something that we have not seen in the six years I've been here. And to be honest with you, I haven't seen it in the 20 years I've been in this business. People just don't come with experience. So, if they come with experience in their CDL, we can move them through the process in less than a week.
May I ask my follow-up question to Mr. Stark of, why are they coming with experience for the first time? What can we learn from that?
My suspicion, I haven't talked to them individually, but I believe that the pay increase that you all approved and City Council funded has made a dramatic difference. Our recruiting numbers, our applicant numbers are unbelievably higher than they were even three months ago.
I mean, I'm, my assumption was that it was pay, for the same reason that I think we had such board support for pay. I am very encouraged by that, as I know this has been an area that's really been a pain point. I will speak for my own district. It's been a real pain point for my own district, but I know it's been across everywhere and in all grade levels as well. So, I'm really encouraged that we had not only a low number of certificated staff with vacancies, of course, that number would ideally not exist, but it is a low percentage. But also, within our buses, it's an incredibly important position, as they are the first face that a lot of our students, and the last face that a lot of our students see. And so, it's a really important job, and I appreciate your dedication to it and letting us know that we have a lot of good recruits coming up and that our families will be better served.
And Mrs. Elrod, if I can just mention here, and again, kudos to this board, because our salary studying, what we're able to do in compensation, you know, first spoke to retention, right? And so, it is good news that we've been able to retain a large number of our drivers coming into this school year. And to Ken's point, it's going to take some time because of the application process, but we feel like we're on a good path to put in a good dent in where we've been with those vacancies. But if I spoke directly to parents and students right now and our staff, I spent some time with our Transportation Department last week, and it's a new day. The culture, the climate within the department, setting the right conditions for them to thrive and just be a part of every student known. I mean, they are the first individuals our students interface with as they're coming to school every day. And so, I was deeply encouraged and inspired by my time with our Transportation Department and the family feel of plugging in and making sure our students have what they need. And so, again, to our students, families, our staff, the Transportation Team is working hard daily to make sure that we're meeting the demands of our routes, keeping our students safe, and increasing our communication around things that naturally will happen and come up, so our families are up to speed around what our routes are looking like. So, thank you for giving the opportunity to share that.
Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Poopa Walker?
Let's be quick. One quick thing. When you're looking to hire the ambassadors or campus support, really urge us to prioritize folks who speak two or more languages and really are from within our immigrant communities as much as possible, so that families and students can speak with them. My second thing is, the Raptor system can be a barrier for immigrant families to come into schools and participate if they're required to produce a state ID, which some families cannot get. So, I'm just curious, what are the options for them to participate in the school community if they cannot go through the Raptor system?
Mara Candy, you want to respond specifically?
I guess I should have sat in the front. If they don't have the ID, they can just, the Raptor system has a mechanism for them to enter their information, so they can just type in their name and the address kind of stuff.
And that, in all schools?
Yeah.
By that, that's awesome. Okay. The other thing I just want to say on the ambassadors, I'm a little worried. First of all, I do want to say that we have heard, and for a number of years now, that our elementary principals crying out for more folks in buildings. You have buildings with a principal, a secretary, a counselor, and teachers often. And so, to have another adult in the building can be a game changer. I recognize we've been really trying to use advocacy centers and so forth and so on, and I think that's great. I want to make sure this is not a fiscal cliff that we're entering, where we are providing all of the support personnel and that we can't sustain it over time. I know that's also a concern with community chiefs, with advocacy center staff, restorative justice staff. I just want us to be mindful that potential recession combined with Esther Cliff can be, we could be back in a really bad place in three or four years. I just wanted to make a note of that.
All right, Mr. Little?
How would they go about if there were community organizations that wanted to participate? Is there like a direct line or a website that they could reach out to MNPD to get more details and learn the process?
Yeah, our, from our end, the campus support position always is pretty much up on our website, that anyone could go in and see the job description and apply for. But we're also looking at, to answer your question, but also to speak to the comment by Ms. Poopa Walker, we're looking at some additional layers of support where we can leverage our community partners and mentorships and, you know, other ways of supporting our students as we're moving forward. So, many of you might be familiar with the program. As I'm talking about this, I'm losing it. Watch Dogs, yes. So, we're having conversations about how we can take to scale programs like Watch Dogs, which stands for Dads of Great Students, who can come and plug in, provide that extra eye and ear mentorship to our students as well. So, we're having those conversations, along with some work around our parent universities, to get parents up to speed and supported as well. But that particular position, we kind of leave open throughout the year, so that we can continue to recruit new individuals.
Yeah, just as it's something that can be highlighted on the website, like temporarily, so they can like go straight to it, like it's a marker that says, hey, if you're interested in Watch Dogs, or being a campus support, or is MNPD providing something where if they needed to go through that department, they could have a contact?
Yes. So, we'll leave it up on our website now. I know MNPD is doing something. And as soon as we secure funding for the positions, we'll continue to broadcast it on a larger scale, maybe even having a banner on our website, so you can see it immediately. Yes, sir. Thank you.
All right, Mrs. Player?
A quick question for the professional development. Why is the literacy hours significantly lower than others? Is there an explanation for that for Slide 7?
So, right now, if you don't mind me kind of backing into the question, our DEI and our SEL training is required for all staff, certificated and support staff. In fact, my team and I just went through a training around DEI ourselves, and ours will be ongoing. So, that is required for every MNPS employee. So, that is one reason. The second reason is, if you recall, last year, we kicked off our required literacy training for K-5 teachers. And our plan for this year was to kick off their required training for our 612 teachers. So, that is also a difference. The requirement for our K-5 teachers happened last year. This year, we focused on our 612. While there were still additional offerings from our great teaching and learning team throughout the year, those requirements weren't there, but we definitely had lots of teachers take advantage of it.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Battle. Thank you for this report. We will now move on to public participation. During this time, everyday community members will have three minutes to present their speech or any concerns or suggestions they might have. At the end of that three minutes, which you will see in the markers or see in the, goodness gracious, the timers, at the end of that three minutes, you'll hear a ding. And we ask that you complete that last sentence and finish whatever you were about to finish saying, please just send to us via email. With that, we'll begin with the first three. Adam Skelton, Sean Monique Hicks, Xanth Joyner. Adam Skelton, Sean Monique Hicks, Xanth Joyner. All right, Natalia Delpino?
Good evening to the board. My name is Natalia Delpino, and on Monday, I started my senior year at MLK Magnet. I stand before you today, representing NOAA's Education Task Force, to discuss my experiences with advanced academics. I began my experience with advanced academics in Metro Natural Public Schools in the eighth grade. I joined the I Am Two class at JT Moore, and as soon as I realized this, I was cloistered off from my other students. I was divided from the rest of the grade. I spent my entire school day with the same 30 students. I felt separated, and I felt like I was not a part of my school community. My experience at JT Moore was not a diverse experience in the classroom. I loved the students I was surrounded with, but I noticed that there were not that many students that looked like me. As I grew in advanced academics and started my high school career at MLK, I realized that offering advanced academics lets students know that they are capable of doing more. At MLK, we see teachers teaching advanced academics that represent our student body. This encourages students to challenge themselves and achieve higher goals. Advanced academics indicates a school that encourages post-secondary study for a diverse group of students. All of our students are encouraged to take AP classes above our three AP requirement at MLK. We are encouraged to take these classes because we are encouraged to get those college credits out of the way in our journey to post-secondary greatness. I have a passion for advanced academics. I just applied to take physics C for my senior year of high school as my math credit, and I'm so excited. I love school. I have school spirit coming out of my ears. And part of that is because I'm challenged every single day at MLK, and I'm surrounded by a community of students who supports me in that journey. And I thank you for your time.
Thank you. Benita Kamowitz?
Kamowitz, yes.
Thank you.
My name is Benita Kamowitz, and I live in District 8. I'm a member of NOAA's Education Task Force, and I'm a retired educator. First, I want to applaud you, Dr. Battle, and your team, with your excellent work. MNPS improved on TCAP scores, and our students made greater progress than the state average. But is our progress equitable? I took an educational statistics course when I was pregnant with my first child. I learned, for example, that a particular teaching method would be best for five out of six students. I wondered, though, what if this child in my belly is the sixth student? The district's equity roadmap says equity is when every student receives what they need when they need it to develop to their full academic and social potential, regardless of their race, nationality, genders, sexual orientation, disability, ethnicity, language, religion, family background, or family... family background, or family income. Every student, every student. But in the 2021-22 school year, black students in MNPS were two times less likely than white students to be enrolled and gifted in talented education. What if this black child who doesn't get a chance for a gifted class is my black child? And black students were 3.2 times more likely than white students to be suspended. What if my black child is suspended? What happens to her self-image, to his future? In high schools that serve mostly, black students have among the fewest early-post-secondary opportunities, such as AP and dual enrollment courses. What happens to my black child's chance to succeed? Our equity roadmap defines the goal, but achieving equity has only begun. It requires involving the community, measuring progress, identifying weaknesses, and importantly, making the results public. NOAA wants the MNPS School Board to adopt the educational equity policy that addresses all aspects of the district's work. NOAA wants the Board to adopt the resolution for racial equity in advanced academics. Kids grow up fast. If we take five years to realize results from our wonderful equity roadmap, my black eighth grader will be out of the system by then. So we have to act now, act strongly, and act together. Thank you for your time.
Thank you. Bethany Riddle Johnson?
Hi. My name is Bethany Riddle Johnson, and I live in District Eight. I'm an MNPS parent, a college professor, and a leader with NOAA's Education Task Force. And I'm here today as well to speak in support of both the, sorry, Educational Equity Board policy and the resolution for racial equity in advanced academics. One of our goals over the past years has been to lift up student voices around the importance of equity in advanced academics. Today, I want to remind you of some of the experiences that students have shared with you at previous board meetings to complement what Natalia just shared, because students are why we all do this work. So Autumn Jemison, a brilliant black woman who graduated from Hillsborough High, spoke of the skills she learned in her IB courses that prepared her for college at Dillard University, including how to manage her time efficiently and when and how to ask questions that bring her clarity. She also shared her concern for her younger sister who attends Hillsborough, because Autumn experienced lower expectation and supports for black and brown students to pursue advanced academics compared to white students at her school. Gwen Johnchin shared the many AP course options that she has had at MLK with the most options in the district, and all AP classes have helped improve her note-taking, critical thinking, and essay-writing skills. Clara Hanala shared her story with you in June, including her positive experiences with Encore and the many important skills she has learned in the four AP courses she has already taken at MLK, including organization and note-taking skills. She also shared her concerns that other students in MNPS do not get the same opportunities. Safa Sawara shared her story with you in July, including the lack of enough working computers when she attended John Early Middle School, and the very limited number of students and teachers who looked like her, a brilliant black Muslim young woman, in her advanced academic courses in middle and high school. She emphasized the urgent need and benefits of diversity. The district's equity roadmap has set a vision for the district. We at NOAA applaud the Board's support of equity and emphasize the urgent need for action, so that every student has the opportunities they deserve. Both the Educational Equity Board policy and the resolution for racial equity in advanced academics are important ways to push forward for equity in MNPS. I urge you to adopt them both at your next meeting. Thank you.
Thank you. Claudia Schenk?
Good evening. My name is Claudia Schenk, and I live with my family in District Three, and I appreciate the opportunity to speak to you all tonight. I am here to talk about the current entrance requirements for MNPS academic magnet schools, in particular MAP and TCAP testing. Before I came here tonight, I took a poll of about five kids in our carpool, ranging from seventh to eleventh grade, and about two to three teacher friends, about what they thought about MAP and TCAP testing. And as you might suspect, they were not in favor of testing. But it was more than just not wanting to take a test. The number one issue that came up with all the kids I spoke to was, I am more than my test results, followed by, MAP and TCAP create such anxiety that I am unable to focus on a two-hour assessment and do well. What it comes down to is that entrance requirements for MNPS academic magnet schools are not equitable for students who have non-traditional learning styles, such as my son, and don't perform well on standardized tests. Studies have shown that test performance doesn't necessarily correlate with future success. Universities across the United States have begun to remove entrance requirements like ACT and SAT scores, because they are not equitable for all student learners. At the beginning of every school year, we tell our kids, do your best. We don't expect all As, but we want to see a serious effort being made. Our son made all As and Bs, and by all accounts from his teachers, knew the subject matter well and should have been accepted to the academic magnet in our pathway. Because of his performance on MACAM TCAP tests, he was not eligible to move on. His homeroom teacher wrote, he made a lot of growth and did really well in my class over the year. I do think that he has the capacity to do advanced work in the subject area. He is a wonderful kid. I know he will do great things. Should we not listen much more to our teachers who spend time with our kids on a daily basis? Is it not disrespectful to once again disregard our teachers' input? If they are teaching the content which prepares students for TCAP, and students have the minimum GPA, then no additional testing requirements should be needed. The current requirements for minimum TCAP and MAP scores are completely arbitrary. I suspect that this has more to do with an easier way to eliminate students with potential. These are kids who are in the process of learning after all, because of a low supply of academic magnets instead of being a true indicator of whether a student would be successful in that environment. If high schools like MLK and Hume-Fogg are so successful, why haven't we replicated their success in other schools in MNPS? We have a, am I supposed to stop?
My apologies.
I'm sorry?
I said my apologies, yes. But you can finish your last sentence, and then just send us the rest via email if you don't mind.
Okay. We have a high demand for such schools, and until we can meet the demand of families with a supply of exceptional schools, we will continue to lose these families to private schools in surrounding counties. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Thank you. Lynn Woodward?
Elizabeth Hines?
Missy Hamilton?
Hi, everybody. Good evening, Board and everyone. I'm so happy to be here, because I want to be your new best friend. Why I'm here is that I am the president of the Board of the Bell Garden, which is located on the Bellevue Middle School. If you can't tell by my outfit, I was there today. During COVID, we became, we've always been there on the Bellevue Middle School campus, right there in the background with our school garden. But during COVID, we realized we needed to become more of a hybrid community and school garden, and it worked. We used our time wisely, and over time, we developed programs for exceptional education. Gifted and talented, we support our teachers, science teachers, outdoor classrooms. We're implementing a sustainability club, because for me, it's always about with the kids. It's research, propose, implement. But what I'm looking for, and the reason that I want us all to be best friends, you can look us up on the internet, and you can see the Bell Garden for fancy, we're on the Facebooks. But what I'm really, really looking for is the Board's support to pass down to the administration. Because what I never knew growing up in metro schools, and don't tell my kids I don't know this, because they're both at Hillwood, and I would be mortified, I did not understand the way that the school actually worked. So imagine if you're me, and you've worked with your own board and your nonprofit and with your community. We have one acre. We spend all of our time educating and developing these programs, and then a new principal comes in and says, you're out. I did not understand this. I thought everyone wanted a school garden, and it's just the most miraculous thing ever. So I'm asking you to be best friends and come out and see me. I'm also asking for you to support the teachers and support your principals. I attended the STEM and STEAM in-service at East Middle School last week, and I got to have this session with all the educators and everything, and they were like, but I don't have time. I'm like, we've got the program. But I have 30 students, and I have to deal with discipline, and we've got the program. So what I'm asking is for you to please know that there are groups of us, there are colleagues behind me in green shirts, we're here. We're here to support you. But we want your support, so we can show up, be best friends, have all the students. Again, we are great with social emotional needs, and I'll tell you right now, you want to talk about punitive, you send those kids out to me to pull weeds, and we'll see if they ever talk back to a teacher again. Trust me. I miss Missy. I see you. But I also, especially in working, I want you to know that we see you, and we're here for you and all the students. Thank you for your support.
Thank you. Nancy Stettin?
Hello, Nancy Stettin. Following up on Missy's comment, Nashville schools need school board leadership to bring students out to study nature directly. Teachers at many schools do this, but we cannot succeed without support from the center. For example, Nashville teaches students the life cycle of butterflies with a kit. Caterpillars and food arrive by mail and grow and pupate in small plastic containers. This allows students to see metamorphosis, but misses an important part of the story. Most butterflies lay eggs on only a small number of host species. They have evolved over millennia to use that plant and cannot use other ones. The loss of these host species is a major cause of the current wave of extinction among insects. Our way of demonstrating metamorphosis doesn't teach this. It's easy to teach in the garden. One of our most beautiful butterflies is the Gulf Fritillary. Its host plant is our state wildflower, the beautiful passion vine. At Park Avenue School, for the last six years, we have grown passion vines over our Mahonia bush in front of the school. These plants are a focus of student attention. Students want to know from the start of school, when will there be caterpillars? In most years, the vines are covered with caterpillars, so that every child who wants to hold one can. They know they have to return the caterpillar to the passion vine, because that's all the caterpillars eat. Students will sometimes get to see butterflies laying eggs. They will get to hunt chrysalises, and it's an experience that they will remember for a lifetime. Last Friday, when I showed up to meet new teachers, I found out that groundskeepers had torn out every single passion vine from our courtyard. Gulf Fritillaries, which come to our garden, will find no place to lay eggs, and students have lost the precious educational opportunity for this year. What we need is leadership. Our leaders need to make it clear that school gardens are an important educational space and must not be destroyed. We need to make it clear that people who maintain our schoolyards must communicate with the schools before taking major actions, such as cutting down plants or heavy mulching. There are many ways of doing this. We know that. We've tried them all. But none of them work without the authority of the central office behind them. Please, as Missy said, be our best friend. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Stettin. Ann Cover?
Good evening, Dr. Battle, members of the Board. My name is Ann Cover. I'm 2804 West Linden Avenue. I'm a pastor, a retired pediatric nurse practitioner, and an urban farmer. I suspect everybody here tonight can understand the connection between burning fossil fuels and the overheating effects of excessive carbon dioxide sent into our atmosphere, where the majority of it stays for centuries. I give thanks for the work that is already underway by our district to make sure that our school buildings are more energy efficient, thus burning less fossil fuels. And, at the same time, I ask how many people here tonight can make the connection between methane gas emissions and waste food in our landfills, or overworked and eroded soils in our field, and flash flooding? These folks probably can, sitting here, the high school students. But how many others here tonight can make the connection between water conservation and capturing carbon dioxide from the atmosphere, and the saving of old-growth trees, of planting native trees and plants, and restoring soils? A couple of years ago, I couldn't have made those connections for you. But after a lot of reading and the discovery of practical hands-on experience that I have in a church garden that I still manage, we began to realize that our practices were restorative. The garden attracted good bugs, butterflies, enriched the soil, and conserved water. So this summer, even in the midst of extreme heat and dry conditions, our garden donated lots of fresh vegetables to three summer food programs, one of them being for families of Tuscaloosa Elementary School in South Nashville. Outdoor hands-on nature education is important. It teaches students to observe and appreciate the world we live in and depend on. Many of our students, though, do not have access to shaded outside places to play, let alone creeks and woods to explore. What better place to learn about natural education than at our school buildings, starting with the youngest children? Outdoor nature education is not a nice extra. It needs to be a fundamental piece of our education. And as Nancy said, and others, many of us in the community are here and ready to help make it happen in every school. Thank you.
Thank you. Next is Basim Farag. Basim?
Did I?
Yeah.
Oh, I apologize. We have them marked incorrectly on my sheet I was given. Thank you so much. So we are starting with Millie.
Millie Flat.
Ann?
Yes, and now you're on Millie Flat. Ann just spoke.
Oh, so that was just Ann that went. So excuse us. Millie Flat.
Can you hear me just fine?
Yes.
I'm with the stewardship, sorry, Sustainability Stewardship Advisory Committee. I'm a volunteer gardener for Nancy Stettin, the person who also talked to you about the gardens a little bit ago. I'm also here to talk about learning outside and incorporating nature into the classroom. I feel like I kind of have a little bit of expertise on this, because I went to your schools as a student for about 12 years. I'm a current college student myself, and I know, based on that experience, that students generally enjoy going outside. They like having recess. It was my favorite part of the day. I feel like it's pretty unsurprising. When the picnic tables are closed outside of my, like, school and senior year, and we weren't able to get to it during like the COVID thing, everyone is super upset. I feel like if we incorporate this sort of like joy of nature, this sort of fresh air, and this escape from the bric-a-block classrooms that we have, I think that we can kind of like, we can put a new sort of joy into learning. It's good for the soul, kind of. I know, based on my time in MNPS, that you guys encourage the use of multiple different learning methods, like kinesthetic learning, auditory, visual. Now that we're sort of incorporating everything into like in-person, like, learning, we're able to utilize all these forms of education. And it's so good. It's great. We're able to utilize like a bunch of different, like, materials and whatnot. We're able to utilize, like, a bunch of different, like, materials and whatnot. So for instance, sorry, I am reading this. It's just that I didn't write it all the way. So for instance, if you have, like, different dirt types, you can bring in, like, a loam and a sand and a clay, and you can show how they interact to create the soil in Nashville. That would have been really useful when I was taking an AP Environmental Science class from my own house. It'll make, like, lessons more memorable and impactful. If you have plants that are, like, photosynthesizing, you explore the leaves and how they catch sunlight and how one side is shinier than the other, you explain that, they'll remember it because they see it. And then whenever they see a plant, they'll say, oh, that's doing the thing. If we foster a love of, like, the environment, and Tennessee's extremely biodiverse, like, environment, especially considering, like, all the stuff going on up in the Rockies, students will begin to sort of, like, the students will begin to, sorry, I lost my place. They'll treat nature with the respect it deserves as they grow older, which is extremely important considering the climate that we have today. Global warming is becoming more and more of an issue. We're, like, running out of fresh water. The National Geographic, like, wrote a couple of years ago about a plastic bag they found on the bottom of the Marianas Trench. I feel like if people become more aware of what's happening around them, they'll have a better earth. Thank you so much.[690.70][690.70](applause)
Thank you, Basem. All right, we will get back to the right pattern. Millie Flat and then Amy Flat.
That was Millie.
That was Millie Flat. We have really gotten it mixed up here, and I apologize.
That's all right. I'm Amy Flat.
Who are Amy Flat?
Hello, honored members of the board, Dr. Battle. I am a gifted and talented educator per Park Avenue Elementary. And on Thursday, I was able to meet with my colleagues, and it was wonderful. We're going to be studying bees this year for first and second grade. And I began to talk about our garden and how excited I was because we had a passion vine. It has big purple flowers. And it had drawn in 10 minutes, and I was standing there and watching, five different species of bee. And I said, man, my school, my inner-city school, that's something that none of you have. And then I came back Friday, and this is what was left. We need some rules in place to protect these assets. This is not the first time this has happened. Last year, my second graders planted bush beans, and they were mulched over and killed. We've had our little, small plants that we had, wildflowers, have been mulched over. We had a sign. If you could just give me the rules. I know that if it's in a bed that's about this tall, surrounded by wood, they won't touch it. If it's in a big pot, they won't touch it. If it's in a bed about the same height as the wood, but it's rock, they'll tear it out. They'll weed eat it, they'll mulch it. If it's in wood that's about this tall, they also mulch it. But I really need these rules written down so then I can build a garden that will outlast me. So if you could give me some direction or some connection so that we can make this last. Because now I'm going to be scrambling to figure out how I attract those bees now.
Thank you.[832.13][832.13](applause) Susannah Fotopoulos?
Beautifully said. Thank you.[836.13][836.13](laughter) Good evening and thank you. My name is Susannah Fotopoulos. I am mom of two Metro students and the founder and former director of Plant the Seed, a local garden-based learning nonprofit that partners with MNPS. Let me ask you, what's growing in your garden right now? Many things can be grown in a school garden. Grade-level academic standards in language, literacy, math, and science are met alongside the real needs of a growing garden. I believe this kind of hands-on learning prepares students for academic success. And there is data that proves it works. A pre-pandemic study conducted by Vanderbilt Peabody showed that pre-K students who experienced this kind of garden-based learning showed more than one percentage point differential in learning literacy indicators compared to their peers who did not have this programming. Improved literacy is grown in a school garden. This kind of learning also makes students more engaged learners and real-world problem solvers. Students in the garden demonstrate critical thinking skills, cooperation with other students, and increased confidence. Through lessons in the garden, students gain a greater appreciation for the natural world around them, and they begin to think creatively about the positive impact they can affect. Problem-solving skills are grown in a school garden. Students in the garden develop social emotional intelligence that allows them to feel and exhibit empathy toward other non-human living things. A young learner over zealously overwatered a tender seedling and broke it at its stem. He looked over at the garden facilitator with sweet tears in his eyes and said, I'm sorry, I don't think I can handle this, as he handed over the watering can. This student felt the loss of that plant. Naturally, in this teachable moment, the garden facilitator comforted the young student and encouraged watering at the roots, not at the top. And together, they planted a new seedling in its place. Connection to and empathy for other living things. Emotionally connected real-life learning. Practical application of the concept of interdependence. All of these things were learned in that one moment in the garden, as well as a hands-on solution to the broken-stemmed seedling. Empathy is grown in a school garden. Studies from the Greater Good Science Center in Berkeley, California, show that two of the greatest predictors of long-term contentment in adults are feeling a part of something and being able to connect to moments of awe and wonder. Students in the garden have countless opportunities for moments of wonder and connection to something bigger than themselves. Don't we want our students to know that kind of contentment as adults? Contentment and connection are grown in a school garden. Dopamine and serotonin, you know, the feel-good chemicals, those increase, while cortisol, that stress hormone, decreases when outside in nature and especially when one's hands are in the soil. After the better part of three years navigating a lingering pandemic, our children need this type of opportunity as an integrated approach to their school day.
I'm sorry, that's your time.
Now more than ever. Please support efforts to increase meaningful sustainability and outdoor education opportunities across the district. Thank you.[1034.85][1034.85](applause)
Basem Farag? Seamus Purdy?
Shame. Shame. My apologies.
Good evening. My name is Seamus Purdy, and I'm honored to be standing here on behalf of a youth-led organization, Schools Not Jails Tennessee. Our schools are a backbone of the city and our communities, and this board is an extension of that. However, the continued support for cops in schools and the recent announcement of effectively introducing cops into elementary schools are antithetical to the goal of serving communities. As I said to the city council in June, as a lifelong MNPS student, now a junior at Hillsborough High, we have been privy to the detachment of the social aspect of people to police who have been increasingly utilized in dealing with the underlying social issues of bullying, mental illness, and other socioeconomic factors. Unfortunately, the recent move to maintain and expand the presence of cops in schools is counterproductive at best and at worst actively harmful. Countless studies and testimonies from the community have shown that SROs are a net negative. Real-life events such as Uvalde, Texas, as has been routinely mentioned over the past couple of months, have shown that SROs are an overwhelming waste of money and are horrifying failure. Despite countless signals showing that SROs are harmful to schools, we continue to sustain and expand their influence, ultimately jeopardizing our youth's future. While progress has been made in building restorative schools, MNPS openly accepting another $6 million worth of effective cops in elementary schools is a significant step back. While these new cops may be disarmed, plain-clothed, and renamed, no amount of anti-bias training or vague platitudes in not being involved in routine student discipline will fix inherent structural issues of police in schools. Realistically, the massive rise in SROs can be directly attributed to racist, fear-mongering rhetoric in the '90s. When we have students being pepper sprayed in Hunter's Lane, essential medication being stripped from students, and students anxious to even go to school, all due to cops, something is fundamentally wrong. When MNPS attempts to approach school safety, two critical pieces are seemingly missing: student input and a holistic approach. Even despite the two student members on this board, time and time again, students and holistic approach are seemingly forgotten in rhetoric and action, which is why I'm here tonight. We need to look at the why of these incidents and take action based off of that. A glimpse into the reality of schools from a student or teacher's perspective is essential. Above all, MNPS needs to listen to the community and the day-to-day testimonies from within. We need MNPS to take action by fighting MNPD and openly pushing city councils to divest from SROs and instead invest in our students. However, this is not being done. The safety, preservation, and prosperity of our youth are reliant upon the removal of any form of cops from schools, investment in a holistic approach that solves the underlying socioeconomic crises in our schools. Thank you.[1212.16][1212.16](applause)
Thank you. Allison Acker?
Hey, good evening. My name is Allison Acker. I am a former public school teacher and a parent of an MNPS first grader in District Nine. I'm here tonight to express my concerns regarding the new school safety measures for elementary schools that was announced on August 2nd and the subject of some discussion tonight. I very much understand the impulse to add additional security measures after Uvalde. I am afraid for my daughter, too. But some of the new school safety measures are not responsive to the concerns raised, particularly at an elementary level, about an outside intruder coming into the school to do harm. I don't know the data that was mentioned earlier about threats coming from within the school, but I wonder if that data is different when broken out among the upper grades versus the younger school students. I understand that this program and the Safety Ambassador program would be staffed with retired MNPD officers who would be unarmed and essentially radio to the nearest police precinct in the event of a threat. It's unclear to me what value they're adding relative to the potential risk. If officers are intended to identify an intruder from the outside of an elementary school, there's no reason for them to be patrolling inside of the school or even entering the school building at all. I'm also concerned about the intent to staff this program with retired MNPD officers, who it seems to me may have a more fixed mindset about issues like student behavior and discipline, the value of social emotional learning, and issues of equity and inclusion for kids. The plan also calls for on-duty MNPD officers to act as a visible presence in elementary schools. Studies have shown that's not effective and has a negative effect on student academic performance and trust in adults at the schools. And as Seamus said so beautifully just a moment ago, it does not actually work in preventing school shootings. That's what the studies show. What I'm afraid they'll end up doing is harming the learning environment. My daughter was so excited to start first grade yesterday, and as we drove up to the school, she had two questions for me. What did I think her teacher was going to be like, and why did she see so many police officers there? And what I'm worried about is that she will end up having more harm come to her than good as a result of this policy. Thank you for your time.
Thank you.[1384.99][1384.99](applause) That concludes this portion of public participation.
Please pardon my interruption, but I was supposed to speak tonight as well.
Could you give us a moment? Give me your name, and then, Mrs. Bobo, would you mind?
It's Grace Olson. It did not appear to be on the list.
We're doing some fact-checking now, a look at the Google form.
There was some miscommunication with my sign-up with a group leader, but I do believe that I have very valuable facts to bring to you tonight. And seeing as how some people did drop off of the docket.
But I'm sorry, our policies would suggest that we only allow students, or only allow community members, to speak when they've signed up adequately. Were you able to sign up?
No, ma'am. There was miscommunication with my director, that we were supposed to be signed up at the same time so we could speak in order.
Ah. That wasn't an error on our part. You're, go right ahead.
Thank you so very much. I really appreciate it. Hello, everyone. My name is Grace Olson. I am a senior at MLK, and I represent District Five. Nature education is something that has been put off for far too long. In my 11 years within the MNPS school system, my classmates and I were never given the opportunity to step foot in nature nor taught about the environment. Let's get back to the basics, back to nature, where we love to learn and evolve from. I guarantee that every one of you all got to explore the outdoors during your school-age years. Nature is not a privilege, it is a necessity. It has proven that nature promotes learning through increased self-discipline, attention span, and physical activity. Students that are involved in nature-based learning have a higher GPA, which would inevitably increase MNPS's graduation rates. Equity is the first major issue. MNPS says that they are making strides towards combating the issue of equity, but are you all truly doing everything in your power? My school is located only a few blocks away from Jefferson Street. According to Brookings, the area surrounding Jefferson Street has the highest incarceration rate in the nation, at an astonishing 14%, and a child poverty rate at 42% compared to the new national average of 14%. These children do not get the opportunity to go outside and play, much less learn about the environment. They are worried about how they are going to feed themselves, stay out of trouble with the law, and try to sleep at night before having to go back to school the next day. That is exactly why we have to bring the said nature-based education into the school system. We need to introduce it to the curriculum to get people outside so they know they can make change, or at the very least, know how the earth functions and grow their own food. In every section of the MNPS curriculum and instruction page online, there's something closely related to students understanding the world through real-life experiences. The environment is the first step to understanding the world, quite literally. Why would we not start taking steps to achieve this goal? Although we have to abide by Tennessee learning standards, I believe that I will use my personal found knowledge about the environment more so than I will ever use polynomials or logarithms. At first, we can take these simple strides towards introducing nature-based education in the classroom. There are already states that have easy-to-follow models. Why do we need to keep coming up to this podium to discuss this urgent matter? We, the students and teachers, are the ones experiencing the effects of your decisions. Considering the people behind me in green, along with the majority of this MNPS student body, I feel confident saying we want direct action. All we are asking is for you to work with us. What are the next steps moving forward? We demand action. Thank you for your time.[1621.01][1621.01](applause)
All right, that concludes our public participation. We'll now move on to the consent agenda. We've already adopted the agenda as listed. Do I have a motion to accept the consent agenda?
I'm moved.
All right, we have a motion. Do we have a second?
A second.
A motion and a second. All in favor, please raise your hand. All right, we'll now move on to A2, Extension of K-5 Literacy Instructional Materials Adoption. We already discussed this in the Teaching and Learning Committee meeting. Some of us were not here for it. I'll entertain a motion. This is Pupa Walker.
I move to extend the adoption of wit and wisdom for K-5 literacy through the 2025-26 school year.
All right, do we have a second?
A second.
All right, we have a motion and a second.
Discussion.
Yeah, discussion. We have a motion and a second. Discussion, Mrs. Taylor. Tyler, goodness.
Yeah, we did not discuss the extension of the Literacy Instructional Manual during our Teaching and Learning Committee that I chaired. So I'm a little disappointed to see that we're just putting it on here to move forward. I have real concerns about the wit and wisdom instructional materials. There was a reason why the board decided to only adopt it for three years as opposed to the typical six, and it was because the board at the time, before I was even on it, already had concerns about the rigidity of the curriculum itself. I am... I thought I'd have a bit more time to get myself ready, so I'm trying to find my notes real quick. But one of the biggest complaints that I have heard about this curriculum is that it is very scripted and that there is not a lot of wiggle room for teachers to be able to do anything outside of what it says you're supposed to do for that time. And so therefore, there are moments where they're not able to meet the needs of every student in their classroom because they're expected to stay on the script of what they are told they have to say. The whole point of having a teaching degree is that you spend time learning how to best educate different... is very scripted and that there is not a lot of wiggle room for teachers to be able to do anything outside of what it says you're supposed to do for that time. And so therefore, there are moments where they're not able to meet the needs of every student in their classroom because they're expected to stay on the script of what they are told they have to say. The whole point of having a teaching degree is that you spend time learning how to best educate different types of learners. And when you have a classroom full of different types of learners, we need to make sure that we are respecting our teachers enough to let them have the autonomy to meet those needs of the different students in their class, and that we're not sticking this curriculum in front of them and saying, "Now read," and then, "I hope everybody gets it from what it says." So one of the things that I had asked previously is, I've been told that there will be more autonomy after the first year, because the first year is all about getting the fidelity of it to make sure everybody understands it. So if there is going to be more autonomy in this next year, what is that going to look like? What will be different for a classroom teacher? What will be different for our students? And how will that difference be communicated out to teachers if we continue to use this
So this, because we've already had --
We did not have this discussion.
My apologies. Maybe I misspoke because I wasn't here for it. So for the presentation, so we've already had the presentation. This is a conversation amongst the board, because this is another consent agenda item. So I pulled it off consent agenda because I thought it might be controversial for our past discussions. And so this is for us to potentially ask questions from the committee.
Well, I just asked several. What does more autonomy look like? What will be different for classroom teachers? What will be different for our students? And how will that be communicated out to them?
Yeah, so I will invite my team up to the podium. I think we have addressed some of these questions a few times regarding our first-year implementation of Witten Wisdom, our expectations for implementation across the board, what professional development looks like, and the fact that it's not considered a scripted curriculum that does provide for intentional autonomy around certain selections throughout the implementation of the curriculum. But Dr. Bellamy, I will kick it to you first, so you can share the updates that we have previously discussed.
Thank you, Dr. Battle. I'm going to ask Executive Officer David Williams to come up. He's also got some members of his staff who work directly in supporting the curriculum, Leah Washington, whom you've all met before, and Kinder Boucher with us tonight as well, and they can speak to specifics about the questions of flexibility, autonomy, and things of that nature. So I'll go ahead and ask David Williams.
And thank you. As David Williams is coming, I will also note that for several weeks, we've provided some updates to the board, particularly specific to Witten Wisdom and our Phase 1 going into Phase 2 with our Witten Wisdom curriculum. So you can also reference that information that has been sent out multiple times. David Williams.
Thanks for the question and opportunity to follow up. I know we ran out of time at the Teaching and Learning Committee meeting on July 12th. But as you said, I think it's important to talk about where there is flexibility, but also I think it's equally important to talk about where we need to maintain high expectations and consistency across the district, because literacy reimagined at its core was about excellence and equity. And so if we compromise on expectations and the integrity of the materials, the rigor of the materials, we have created an inherently inequitable system. So I'd first like to outline five things where we think we need to maintain consistency, and that's, of course, with the instructional block, having the 90 minutes for Witten Wisdom and 45 minutes for foundational skills. We do think it's critical that we provide access to all of the complex texts that are included in the curriculum, the knowledge-building curriculum. In other words, we think it's critical that schools all across the district are providing access to the same set of core texts. We also think it's important, as you think about the assessments that are included in the materials, those are also key to implementing with the integrity that we want. So those include end of assessment, new module assessments, new reassessments, focusing question tasks. And those are the tasks, and that's the outcome. We want students to be at this point, and we think that we have to maintain that level of rigor. The lesson components themselves, so there are certain components of the lesson, the welcome, the launch, learn, land, wrap, and deep dive. And then again, another thing, and when you think about the way the modules are structured, the way the curriculum is designed, it's important to sort of stay on sequence. If you start pulling out this lesson, or I'm going to skip over this one, or teach them out of order, you're pulling threads out of a tightly woven fabric of learning, and that can create lots of challenges. So that's the fidelity side. We don't use the word fidelity. We use the word integrity, because we agree with you that it's important for teachers to be able to adapt to the needs of their students, but again, not compromising those high-level expectations. So some examples of integrity where teachers would have autonomy would be in the instructional routines. These are the means to those ends, right? So if they want to swap, say, a think pair share with a mix and mingle, instead of a jigsaw, they could do a 3-2-1 reflection. They can certainly adjust from partner work to small group. And also, the Teaching and Learning Agenda, our Teaching and Learning Meeting on July 12th, we talked about how our EL and our EE departments have worked very closely with ELA to say, if we're going to keep these expectations and the tasks the way they are, what are additional scaffolds and supports that teachers can employ? What are some strategies they can use to give students who may need extra support that additional support? So when we talk about integrity, it's important to think about the flexibility that teachers will have, but also maintaining the fidelity, so we're not compromising the rigor. So in order to answer your question, I thought it was both. It's important to address both. The way that's going to be communicated is certainly going to be ongoing conversations with our coaches, with our principals, with our executive directors. We want to make sure that everyone in our system charged with supporting elementary literacy really, really understands where it's important to maintain the rigor, but also where those flexibility options exist.
I'm glad to hear that there is going to be some autonomy. I understand that you can't teach lessons out of order if the lessons are supposed to build on one another. That makes sense to me. I also understand that it's important to make sure that if you're referring to a text, that you have access to it. So I understand that there are some things that need to stay there. I just want to make sure that our teachers are aware of what autonomy exists, because there has really been a feel of almost choking as far as not being able to do more than what has been placed in front of them. And I'm really very glad to see that the EL and ELA departments have been working together to find supports, because that was going to be another question of mine. So I'm glad to see that some have already been put together. Are we going to continue to have the weekly sessions where they have to meet with their coach, and the coach goes over how to do a lesson? Or now that they've been through that for a year, are they going to have a little bit more autonomy to kind of spend that planning time planning?
That expectation will still be in place. The goal last year was to really deeply plan for one lesson. And so on average, they are teaching three lessons a week. And so we thought that if they could replicate that intellectual preparation that they're doing with their team, that they would intake that and be able to apply it to the other lessons that they would teach that week. So we will still continue to have that, but those are going to be, they'll be deeper. And they will probably be able to get through more than one lesson. They may be able to extend to two or three, but we will still have that same collaborative planning expectation. And I think it's important to point out that it does take a lot of prep. If it were scripted, it wouldn't require all this preparation.
I mean, I've read the materials. I've seen where it's scripted. I understand that sometimes a lot of prep makes it seem like it's not, but there are definitely scripted components of it. So I don't know, I don't like this idea that we're trying to pretend like it's not. Every curriculum has scripted aspects to it. It wouldn't be one without that. And for our first-year teachers, that's actually really helpful, because they haven't had the time in the classroom to figure out how to do it. I have heard back from some younger first, second-year teachers who have said that the scripts have been very helpful for them, because they wouldn't have known how to do it otherwise. But I don't think we need to pretend that it's not scripted, when there are definitely scripted pieces of it. I just wanted to make sure that our teachers who have experience under their belt, who have a proven track record of getting their kids to where they need to be, that they are not being driven out of a classroom because they're being told that they can't teach the way that they know is going to be best. Teacher retention is extremely important to me, even more so than getting new people on boarded. I think when we lose teachers that have been doing it for years, we lose more than the sum of our parts. And so we need to make sure that we're doing everything we can to give our teachers the ability to do the job we hired them to do. Is there a way for our teachers to give feedback if they feel like they'd like to try something different, and they've been told by their coach that that's not something they're allowed to do? Is there a way for them to provide feedback?
Feedback about?
About how they're teaching, about what they're being required to do. Is there?
I would certainly want to have a conversation with their coach.
Okay.
And as again, we're going to continue to work with our coaches, because just as we have our teachers provide differentiated supports for students, we provide differentiated supports for teachers, as you say, a new teacher versus an expert teacher. And so we want to have those conversations. That's why it's a little nuanced to say, here's specifically where they have flexibility versus not. Sometimes it just sort of depends on where the teacher is in their comfort level with implementing the material. So the first place I would say is the coach. We also have our lead coaches that are assigned to school, and that can also be another layer of support to work with the teachers and make some of those appropriate decisions.
And then I know that I've seen, we actually already talked about the amount of hours that people have spent in literacy, and that sounded like it was mainly the older students that were in that literacy training, based on what you said.
That was just the required portion for 6 through 12 this summer.
Yeah. Have our K-5 teachers gotten any more, or is it just the ones who maybe didn't get through the training last year are now taking it?
Right. We required two days of training for our K-5 teachers last year, and we required the same two days if they were new timMPS. We did that this summer. But there's ongoing supports, of course, through our schoolage groups, as well as our coaches, et cetera. So there's ongoing supports, but that was our initial implementation training.
Okay. Okay. Well, I appreciate you coming up here and giving me all this information. Thank you very much.
All right, Mrs. Masters?
Thank you. You might as well stay for just a second. So are teachers, is it being explicitly explained to them that they do have autonomy in this implementation? Are they given autonomy? I understand that goal-setting and tracking metrics is a part of the process. Are they setting their own goals? So that we're acknowledging that different teachers may pace through it differently. They may want to focus on certain areas differently than the teacher across the hall from them. You know, as long as the overall curriculum is being followed, I'm just kind of wondering about, and this might be a question for Mason Bellamy as well, how clearly are they being told you do have autonomy within this, so that they aren't feeling sort of that pressure?
I appreciate that sentiment both you and Ms. Tyler expressed. We don't want teachers to feel suffocated. I mean, I taught for a long time, and that's certainly not something we want our teachers to feel. So I do think it's incumbent upon us to communicate, again, specifically where you have some of this flexibility, to really make decisions, instructional decisions that are best for your kids. That is critical. I think we all would agree with that. Where I would have a little bit of an issue with, again, straying really far, you know, from doing something radically different from the teacher across the hall and maybe changing the pace too much, is we have a 30% mobility rate. And so as kids transfer from school to school and they're on different places, it's really going to be really confusing for students and for families to try to navigate being in wildly different places. So the mobility rate that we have within our district is something that we have to pay attention to. And again, consistency and equity are critical.
David, if I'm correct, if I'm remembering correctly, in the curriculum itself, there are places where it calls out where there are some options for flexibility and adjustments. It is called out in the curriculum itself, correct?
Minutes, scaffolds, recommended differentiation points. That's right. But Ms. Masters, I would say that some variance is natural. I mean, some variance is going to happen, but again, if I'm making radically different choices, and I'm going to skip to the third module, and we're in the first quarter, you know, obviously that's going to be a present a challenge.
Okay. I do understand that. I guess I just, I think that part of the beauty of a truly amazing teacher is the ability to have that constant communication with their students. And, you know, if the students get really excited about something, to take a moment and dig in on that a little bit further, because all the students are unique, and they're unique when they come together in the classroom. And I just think, you know, it pains me to think, you know, like the amazing third-grade teacher that both of my children are fortunate enough to have would feel forced to move forward and to not be able to relish those moments with the students.
Teachable moments. They have a name?
Yes, those teachable moments.
I agree with you.
And so I just want to be sure that that is communicated to our teachers. I want them to feel it's all well and good to have the best-paid teachers in the state, but I want them to also truly understand that we recognize them as professionals. And they, I mean, they come into the classroom with a lot of training, so I don't think we need to be teaching them how to teach.
A lot of knowledge, a lot of expertise, a lot of training, as you say. And I think one of the other ways that we have expressed our respect of their professionalism is to provide materials. There's been so long where they had to go source and pay for their materials. So at the same time, what we're doing is providing materials. So now it's how to best use these to meet the kids where they are and what their needs are. So I certainly agree with you on that point.
All right. Mr. -- I'm sorry, Mrs. Pupa Walker, Mr. Little?
I just want to, I know we aren't in the business of doing causality, but I am very encouraged about the progress we've made this year. I think implementing a change after we just got started on this would be unhelpful. I also think we're about to implement math, new math standards. I think asking teachers to take on another round of change would be hard. I also really believe that our literacy scores have been too low for too long. And to have ambitious, you know, rigorous standards that teach, and I'm not saying teachers don't want it, be rigorous and don't want kids to excel, but I think we have to do something different. And I feel like this is something that I'm encouraged by and I support, and I would like to see us play it out and see, and do the full implementation, and then have that discussion again. I think the reason we took the three-year, I was here for that vote, to cut it in half, was simply to acknowledge, let's give this a moment. We've done that. I'm encouraged by our results. I think we need to stay the course, so.
Thank you. Mr. Little?
That was just it, speaking today, academic achievement, so I won't repeat.
All right. Mrs. Tyler?
I just had a couple more questions. Teachers, last year were writing lesson plans, and they were having to fill out a sheet for their ELL students, and they found that really too much paperwork that ended up with the same results. Are we going to require that of our teachers with the ELL students? Or is this new work together with the ELA department going to end the need for that extra sheet? Because if they're already writing their lesson plans, they can just write the supports into the lesson plans and not have to do the same thing twice.
Agreed. You know, so if I have an ELL student, I have the ILP, then if I do a learning plan, and I begin providing scaffolds and differentiated support for those students, that is my lesson plan. How I'm providing those supports are how I'm going to enact my lesson plan.
Okay. And then also, we had talked a little bit about schools, who gets to decide what happens during PLT, because as a district, we've been saying you can pull kids during that time, but some principals have been saying, no, you can only do Lexia Core or iReady during that time. And so now that you've had a chance to meet with the principals for the school year, have we made it clear that that time is really to be used at the discretion of the teacher for, yes, maybe iReady for most of the kids while the teacher pulls a small group?
Right. I will tell you, that is an ongoing, something that we are constantly having to communicate and reiterate and reinforce. And so it's not that we've just had a training, and we met the principals, and we said this, but that's something that we'll constantly reinforce with our MTSS coaches, our exceptional education coaches, through our EDs, through our principals, to make sure they understand. So if I have a student who's identified, based on my screening process, who's in need of, say, tier-three math intervention, if they're going to be on iReady, here's how I implement iReady, right? And there's always going to be a teacher component, as I said last month. There's always going to be a teacher component and an online component. That's part of what makes it, you know, a sufficient intervention curriculum. So to answer your question, we haven't necessarily nailed that down. That's always an ongoing thing about how to best spend that time, how to best meet student needs, because it is personalized learning time. And then again, as a follow-up, how to continue to implement those programs with fidelity. I think one of the challenges that we've had, to be honest, is when we shifted to iReady and Lexia, we did that because those could be delivered in a virtual setting. And so now that we've shifted back, it's how do I come back off of that a little bit to enact the in-person part? And so that's something that we're going to have to continue to work on.
If a teacher has concerns about wanting to maybe pull a small group during that time and being told that they're not allowed to, who would they bring that concern to?
Their principal.
And if their principal's the one who's telling them that they can't, who would they bring their concern to?
Dr. Bellamy? Yeah.
So I think they'd start with their principal and having a discussion with the MTSS team that helped decide which interventions were most appropriate for those students. If they get to an impasse, and the principal has determined that that is the intervention they'd like to see, they can always reach out to their MTSS coaches. They can always reach out to their executive director of schools. I have a great relationship with my friends from MNEA there, and there are often times that they bring in an MNEA rep, and Michelle and I'll have a conversation on Fridays. Paula, I saw her here as well. So there's a variety of different ways. So there's a variety of different ways that we can intervene and really bring all the interested parties together and make a determination about really the only thing that matters and what's best for that child, right?
Exactly.
And so oftentimes, our professionals do have some disagreements as to the intervention that could be best, which is why we follow the team approach. And so I would just encourage any teacher that is frustrated by that to, as David said, start with their principal. And if they still feel like they're at an impasse that professionally they can't get past, then they would pursue that, just like they would anything, any other decision that they wanted to kind of ask questions about or support. They can reach out to their ED, they can reach out to their MNEA supports, their MTSS teams, coaches, talented staff we have from Aliyah Washington, or, I mean, they can email me directly as well.
All right. Thank you, Dr. Bellamy. All right. No further questions? Can you restate the motion?
The move that we extend the adoption of wit and wisdom for K-5 literacy through the 2025-26 school year.
All right. All in favor, please raise your hand. He was second, it was the restatement here. All right. All opposed? One opposed, all abstaining, one abstaining. All right. Thank you. We will now move on to announcements. We'll begin on the end with our senior student, board member, Ebenezer.
Thank you very much. First off, I just wanted to mention that this would be Angelie's last official meeting. And we all just want to say we care about you, love you very much, and we wish you the best at Duke. Second of all, I just want to congratulate everybody with the last couple, two days, I guess, especially the seniors. You know, I'm very happy that we made it so far, and it's surreal sometimes to feel like the big man on campus, even though the freshmen are still taller than me, but, you know. We'll be fine. And that's pretty much it. Thank you.
Thank you. Dr. Gentry?
Just want to say congratulations, Dr. Battle. We chatted a little bit this morning about how schools started off and is starting off, and it does sound like it is going well. I'm really looking forward to letting this week settle in and then going in and stopping by and saying hello. I'm really excited about the new principalships. And I just want to say that the, I don't know what the right word is, but the boldness to do what's necessary and to do what's unexpected for our kids is something that you have demonstrated consistently, and being very selfish, especially in District One, where the challenges are multifaceted. You want to hear the comment about 30% mobility rate in the district overall, when I represent a district that has schools with nearly 100% mobility rate sometime, because we sit, you know, in proximity to so many homeless shelters. And so that turnover rate is extremely high. And so it's difficult, and I say this often, especially being a board member, when the constituencies that we represent are so different and their concerns are so different. And having to really understand the need to better understand, so I appreciate the questions, to better understand the district-wide decisions that have to be made, even understanding that there are these nuances within our districts. But, you know, I've used this example before, and I won't go deep into it, about evidence-based order sets. So when we went into our hospitals and created evidence-based order sets, the doctor's complaint was, you're going to tell me how to do medicine? You're just cookbook medicine. It's not. Nothing, no curriculum that you put in front of a teacher is going to erase the skillsets, the talent that they bring into the classroom, their ability to recognize the needs and the opportunities that are presented by their students for them. And so I would just encourage, if a teacher is really feeling, and so I want to say this, though, this curriculum isn't the first thing that has happened in public education to tie the hands or to make a teacher feel like her hands are tied, right? I mean, didn't we just bring phonics back?
Phonics have always been there.
But you remember, but the whole concept, the whole idea, right? But that's my point. Phonics has always been there. And so the ability to teach a child will always be there, you know, regardless, in my opinion, regardless of the framework that gets put there. But again, Dr. Battle, I just, I can't emphasize enough how refreshing it has been to not stick with the tried and true and really make those decisions. Like, we've got, you know, at one of our schools in District One, we've got a new principal from California. He's not even from here, y'all. And he's a heat. And so, you know, it's just really making those decisions that are not easy, sometimes going against public sentiment, probably going against what may feel like the majority just because we give it, elevate it and give it airtime, but it's not. But really taking a look at what's going to move the needle and do, and make the difference for our students. And so I just want to thank you for that specifically, and then again, congratulate you on a great start to the school year.
Thank you. Mrs. Poopa Walker?
I want to just start by saying I'm excited about all the back-to-school stuff. Hillsborough Bash on August 14th, 18 more back-to-school carnival on Friday. I want to say thanks to all the staff for making sure schools were ready for our kids on day one. Want to wish happy birthday to Christian Bugs and Sharon Gentry on Monday. They celebrate a birthday, happy birthday. Want to particularly call out Ken Stark for a minute, who got on a team's call with the Julia Green PTO leaders. Not an easy task sometimes. Parents who have serious questions about bus transportation, legitimate questions, he handled it. He was prepared, he was gracious, he was generous with his time, he was professional, he made us all look good. So thank you, Ken Stark. I know he's got a super-duper hard job right now with bus driver stuff. And finally, I want to congratulate Erin O'Hara Block for winning my seat. She's going to be an amazing addition to this board. I'm really excited for all of you to get to know her. And congratulations, Erin.
Thank you. Mrs. Bush?
No announcements.
Thank you, Mrs. Bush. Mr. Little?
Just want to highlight, as Jenny said, the community partnerships for back-to-school. Just in my organization, Propel, we did one that had a lot of Latino and families from 37207. So just to see the need and people coming out, schools came out, Metro Police came out, and other community vendors. And then also, as we talk about school safety, I think community partnerships, being able to help out without being armed. I think I see a gentleman from Guardian Angels who's reached out and he's willing to step up. And I just think these are things that, as we hear parents concerned, we also see the community step up and want to fill the gap, even if it's volunteer. And then the last thing, and I know he's not here today, but I want to thank Dr. Sevier. He met with a couple of education fellows last week and just kind of going over some things and questions ahead, but just really took the time. He was candid, but he was also serving MMP as well. So thank you for that, Dr. Sevier, if you're listening.
Thank you, Mr. Little. Mrs. Elrod?
Thank you. So I have two remaining back-to-school events happening this week. The first is at McMurray Middle. Theirs is on Thursday, the 11th, from 5:00 to 6:30. That's when their parent open house will be, as I knew so many other families were busy last week with their back-to-school experiences. And then the Creve Hall Elementary's annual back-to-school picnic will be held on August the 12th from 5:00 to 7:00 in the school parking lot. That's always a big event, so please be advised to do that. I always encourage families to join their PTO, PTA. That's always the best way to figure out what's going on inside your school and what the needs are there, so get hooked up that way. And of course, if you need any help, we're always happy to plug you in to the right place on that. I also had the honor of getting to speak to United for Hope about two weeks ago, and I really wanted just to publicly say that I appreciated all those community helpers in our community model schools that we have. Those assistants that we have from those places of worship are instrumental to specifically some District Two schools in providing meals and tutors and other things. And so I really appreciated that opportunity in getting to speak to them and thank them for their service on behalf of the board. Thank you.
Thank you, Mrs. Elrod. Mrs. Flair?
I just want to recognize the passing of Shanka White-Dugare. She's an MMPS alum, and she was also a teacher at Bonavista. She was also my classmate at Fisk, and she was also just featured in the feature film of Elvis, singing, making her national debut. She was literally a part of the soundtrack of my college career at Fisk, and she was just about to go back into teaching after her career before her untimely passing. So just want to give condolences to the family, but then also just someone who had a very big passion for kids. And if you knew Shanka, she had a big spirit, a warm and motherly heart, and made everyone feel warm and welcome and loved like no one else. And I wish she would be able to come back to MMPS and sing to all the kids and be able to brag that she was in a big national movie. But I just want to recommend, just to recognize that someone who was a former teacher and a former student of MMPS, that no matter how you start or where you come from, that you can have a big and beautiful life and make it to the big time and show that even with your adverse experiences, you still can succeed and soar. So I just want to honor Shanka White-Dugare's life. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Flair. Mrs. Masters?
I want to add to what Frida had to say about that, and I just, I wanted to let everyone know that with help from MMPS Communications, we were able to put together a certificate for Shanka's family. One of her friends and another MMPS classmate had reached out asking us to do that, and I'll forward that to all of the board members. And I just heard from her friend saying, thank you for taking the time to create this beautiful certificate for my friend. And I just, I was really moved that her classmates from Maplewood High School knew that being an MMPS graduate was such, so important to her, that it meant something for us as a district to honor her. And I did not know that you were her classmate. Wow. I also want to say thank you to Councilmember Emily Benedict and to our East Precinct Commander of MMPD, and to our NDOT team, and to PTO leaders at Dan Mills Elementary School. Just before school was about to get started, we all met up on Greenland Avenue to talk about the hot mess that is drop-off at Dan Mills. I get to say that because I went through that drop-off for eight years. And Counselor Benedict and I sent a letter together to the families, letting them know that there is no parking on that street, there's never been parking allowed on that street, but everybody just does it anyway. And I've got to tell you, Emily Benedict has been out there two mornings in a row, very nicely and lovingly letting people know what the deal is, with help from MMPD. And NDOT will be putting up more signs very soon. They've been ordered. So thank you, Counselor Benedict, for that. It was just a great representation of wonderful partnership. I'm also really excited that we passed, as part of our consent agenda, that our staff will now be eligible to ride the MTA buses at no cost. And I'm very proud of the work that our contracting team did along with MTA to make sure that that could happen and that they could be a part of that, and I'm excited about the rollout of that for our staff. Also want to reiterate, especially considering Claudia Schink's comments tonight about magnet schools, that I am still very much interested in having a work session to talk about our magnet schools, perhaps appropriate for the next retreat. And I am planning to recommend some amendments to our magnet school policy at the board level. Be on the lookout. And finally, I want to say, as a recipient of a Plant the Seed grant while I was a PTO volunteer, I'm personally devastated by the notion that a garden so generously funded and so lovingly grown could be so carelessly destroyed as a result of what surely was simply a lack of communication. So I would like us to talk about how, at the board level, at an administrative level, we can keep that sort of thing from happening when community members, parents, families, students, teachers have all worked so hard to create something. So I'd like us to continue that conversation as well. I think that's it. Thanks.
Thank you. Mrs. Tyler?
Yeah, so several things. One, I want to recognize Angelie's last time. She's going to college next week, so big changes. I'm looking forward to onboarding our new student board member in September, is that correct? And Ebenezer being our big senior on the block now. I don't know why you didn't wear your Burger King hat here, but glad to see you back. I also wanted to take a moment to again congratulate Dr. Diaz from Nashville Big Picture High School. It's just such an honor for her to receive, not just within MMPS, not just within the state of Tennessee, but a national recognition of her excellence and the good she does for all the students in her school. So we're very lucky to have Dr. Diaz, and I'm very, very proud of her and what Nashville Big Picture does. And then also, I met with the Bellevue Optimist Club last week, and they are interested in plugging in into MMPS schools. And so we're talking about what's the best way to do that. And I just want to invite any other groups who would love to find a way to plug into the MMPS schools to reach out to whoever your board member is, and we'll find a way for you to get there. I think we're only going to be stronger with more community support, so thank you.
Mrs. Masters had one last thing.
I just also wanted to say that Dr. Battle and I both got to speak with the Mayor's Neighborhood Academy and talk about school getting started, and thank you for that opportunity to the mayor.
Thank you. And to our graduate, Angelie.
Thank you. Happy start of the new school year. I hope everyone had a great and restful summer. I want to start off by saying that I had the honor of attending and speaking at the kickoff event for teachers last week with Ebenezer. So I just wanted to emphasize our thank you to all teachers throughout MMPS for all their hard work. MMPS students are prepared for the future and success, and this wouldn't be possible without the teachers, mentors, and adults in our schools. Okay, so to current high school seniors, college admission season has officially started, and as someone who finished my fair share of college applications last year, I know how stressful this time can be. So I'm offering a very laid-back service to all MMPS seniors that need help with essay ideas and reading, scholarship information, advice, and whatever aid I can help in any way. So this would be completely free and available until roughly September 1st, because I do have classes. But I do want to remain to be a resource for MMPS. If you have any questions or if you're interested, I can be reached at angelie.kimbo@duke.edu.
What, dot edu, what?
Which is my first and last name with a period, angelie.kimbo@duke.edu. And because this is my last meeting and I'm leaving next Friday, I just wanted to say thank you one last time to this entire board and to the district for all that is being done to put students first. Thank you.
Thank you. You will certainly be missed, but Ebenezer, I'm sure you're ready to mentor this new young junior, so thank you both. Yes, so thank you all for all the bashes that took place over the past week, maybe two weeks. I'm sure our community is just still, I don't know, bursting with joy, and wallets are still a little bit more full because volunteers stepped in to support and donate to our students. That's really it. I'm just so excited for the beginning of this school year, and the end of my term is chair. So be there, no further business. This meeting is adjourned.
Give them a meeting.
This has been a service of the Metro Nashville Network. If you would like to see this presentation again or for more information on this and other programs, visit nashville.gov.